Okay, everyone. Welcome to the August 7th Council meeting, open session. And we're going to open the session 18:33. That's 6:33 for those who are at PM. invocation please, Pastor Dick. Thank you. Father, we come before you tonight. And Lord, we come asking for your blessing, for your leading upon this time together tonight. And we come tonight to pray for the city of Canyon Lake. We just continue to pray that you would bless and protect this area, the home that you've given to so many. Father, we pray for just the specific needs in this area. We pray for those specific things that need to be discussed tonight, that you would grant wisdom and discernment, that you would bless and lead in the conversations and the decisions that needed to be made, that you might again continue to bring your presence to this community. We pray for our country tonight, Lord, as we continue to pray for those in Dayton and those in El Paso and their families. And Father, we just continue to pray for leadership, for decisions that need to be made in our nation. And we pray specifically for our first responders right here in Canyon Lake, Lord. Those who daily put themselves out on the front lines for the protection of this community. We ask for their protection, your blessing around them tonight as well. So might you bless this evening and might you be glorified in it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you. Please, Mary Stephanie Darcy, please lead us into places.
Absolutely. Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Castillo.
Here.
Mayor Protam Aaron-Crams.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Absent from today's meeting is Councilmember Bonner.
Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the council agenda, please.
So move.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Jim Randall.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. The Chamber is proud to welcome new members. Canyon Canines in the Eastport Center is offering doggy daycare, boarding, and grooming. Bellagio Business Services, it's a home-based business providing small bookkeeping, small business bookkeeping. And Canyon Lake Goods in the Town Center between Signature Dessert and Sports Stop. We're currently very busy planning our fall session of Oktoberfest and Parade of Frights. The Ninth Annual Oktoberfest is Saturday, September 28th, from 4:00 to 9:00, in the parking lot in front of the post office. Everyone asks why, always asks why we have it September. Well, the Germans actually started that. They started in the middle of September and then October Fest is done, is finished, the first week in October. Well, it's nothing we're doing. And the other reason is, as both of you know here, we have a lot of different clubs. And the Canyon Lake Car Show is, we're always kind of shifting around, make sure they have their date, we have our date, and everyone's happy so you can get to both events on different The Chamber's Oktoberfest is fun, fun for the whole family, features live music by the American Bavarian Brass Band, traditional food, beer and wine, vendors, ABC Bounce, we've bounce houses and carnival games, face painting and more. We will have Thunder also join us this year again. And non-food vendors, there's some spots available at $40, but they're going fast. If anyone's just interested, they need to contact Allison at the Chamber office. Saturday, October 26th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, brings hundreds of costume children to the Town Center for our annual Parade of Frights. This event is in its 27th year. And it is multi-generational. Children trick-or-treat through the Town Center using the Chamber treasure map to find treats. There is a children's costume contest, which again, Thunder will be leading the charge on that. Mike Schroyer will DJ it from Good Time Entertainment. ABC Bounce again will have carnival games and some inflatables. Any of the Chamber members that are not located in the Town Center can have a booth in the general area where the parade is and make their business, people wear their business. The Town Center may get on a treasure map or set up a booth and pass out treats, and the cost is $30. The Chamber's seeking sponsorship for the events. Great way to get your name out if you're new in the community or what have you. We've always had some good sponsors over the years that helped us out with it. That's about all we have. That'll get us to the end of the year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, new employees?
Yes. We have three new employees that joined us recently, and I know that you've had a chance to meet one or two of them. But we wanted to officially introduce them to the Council and to the community tonight. I'd like to start with Megan Nazarino, if you could stand up. This is Megan. Megan joined us on July 8th. She comes to us from WRCOG. She's part of the WRCOG fellowship program, which is great because not only is she an excellent employee, but she's also absolutely free.
We're not clapping on the free pro. No. It's a free stuff.
We run a pretty tight ship here. One of the things that we don't have, a lot of cities have, is a management analyst. And so Megan's doing a lot of higher-level analyst work for us, which is fantastic. She's been here a month already and she's doing some great, great work. She is a resident of the City of Paris. Graduated from the University of California, Irvine, with a bachelor's degree in political science. She has interned with Legal Services Corporation in Washington DC. She's interned in the Public Works Department for the city of Reno Valley. And in addition to working for us, she also does some administrative work with the Inland Empire Hispanic Leadership Council, and we're very pleased to have her.
Great. Great.
This is Officer Fred Lopez. Fred joined us on July 12th. Many of you knew Mike Feeney, who left us a couple of months back. Fred has joined to replace Mike Feeney. Fred works as a code enforcement officer and actually enforcement administrator for the city of Lake Elsinore, where he lives. He has many years of enforcement experience, which is great because he can capitalize on that experience now. He is a graduate from the Union Institute in University of Brea and has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice Management. Fred is helping fill a real need for us. He's working, he works for the city of Lake Elsinore Monday through Thursday, and then he works for us on Friday, and then either Saturday or Sunday, patrolling the BLM land. And we've been seeing a pretty big increase in activity out there, so we're really happy to have him. We'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
And just joining us on Monday is Erin Rodriguez. Erin is a Canyon Lake resident. She's a native of Riverside County. You will find her working in the front desk area at the main City Hall building, we, as an office specialist. So Vicki Day will be working the morning shift, and then Erin will be working the afternoon shift for us. So you'll see her smiling face when you come in and when you call. She's a graduate of Cal State Fullerton with a bachelor's degree in kinesiology. And she came to us from Baldi View Healthcare as a patient care coordinator, and we're very happy to have her. Welcome.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please read the public comments, Steve.
Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you're commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the City Council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. I have two cards, and I will start with Darcy Burke.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, guests. Tonight I want to talk a little bit about a proportional notice that Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District mailed to all Canyon Lake residents. And a proportional notice gives notice that we are considering a rate increase. And no one likes rate increases, but I want to talk about how this one is particularly necessary in the steps that the water district has done to minimize it. Seventy percent of our water comes from the state water project and the Colorado River, and that comes through Metropolitan Water District and Western Municipal Water District. And they have proposed a five-and-a-half percent rate increase for this coming year. We're proposing a 3.25% increase. And that's because of the due diligence of achieving operational efficiencies using technology, going after grants, $30 million worth of grants in the last few years, refinancing debt, and looking for other non-ratepayer revenue to offset the increase. So no one likes a rate increase. I wish I was here to tell you that there was rebates coming instead. But the reality is, the costs are going up, the regulations are becoming more intense, and we have legislative mandates to operate in efficient and cost-effective organization. I understand that a lot of people may have concerns or questions, and that's not something that I can cover in three minutes. So I'm hosting a coffee this Saturday and next Saturday at the new Starbucks on Railroad Canyon from 7:30 AM to 9:00 AM, and I'm happy to take any questions that I can answer, and if not, I'll get the answers to them. So I just wanted to share this information and let everybody know that on August 22nd, we will be considering the rate increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Darcy, I got a question.
Only one?
Only one.
Okay.
And then all will catch you at the coffee.
Okay.
Is, look like EPMD is going to import water this year?
Import?
To bring it into Canyon Lake.
Possibly. It really depends on what's available through Metropolitan. So again, we look at water supply and balance and cost and see what's available. If for some strange reason, there is no water available, we wouldn't be able to purchase it. It really depends on meeting certain tiers first. So I think what we have decided as a board is that to be as proactive as possible to take advantage of when less expensive water's available to move and to do so timely. So at this point, the Water Resources staff isn't suggesting that we move anytime soon, but that could change very quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I only have one other card, but it's for items 10 and 11, so we'll hear his comments then.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. Would you read the consent calendar, please, Madam Clerk?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a Council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Okay. Council, is any items on consent wanting to be pulled? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion in a second, please.
A motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Castillo.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Aaron-Crams.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Green.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar with Councilmember Bonner absent.
Okay, scheduled events. Notice for future events on the Friday flyer is that it's on the website. So for those who have a computer and know how to use the website, go look at our website. We do try to post activities and things that are going on in our community and in our city. So please review the city webpage as well as the Friday flyer. Okay, business items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item five. The League of California Cities has their annual conference coming up, October 16th through the 18th. It'll be held in Long Beach this year. Per the League bylaws, if the city wants to be represented in the business meeting and have a vote in the business meeting, the Council needs to appoint a delegate and one or two alternates. And that alternate has to be registered for the conference and has to be present at the business meeting, which is scheduled for Friday, October 18th, at 12:00 through 1:00 PM. I sent an email out to the Council on June 13th with this information. Councilman Smith responded that he plans to attend and would be interested in being a delegate, being the delegate for the city. Subsequently, Councilman Bonner also responded, saying that he plans to attend and would be interested in being either a delegate or an alternate. And those are the only responses we've received so far. But we would like to know, if you have a chance to let the city clerk know if you plan to attend, that would be helpful. And so staff recommends at this time that the Council discuss and appoint a delegate and one or two alternates for the conference.
Okay. Open for discussion. Jordan?
I think I already responded to Adam some time ago, saying that I would be going, hoping that we would get rooms closer to the convention this year than last year. As far as being a delegate, I'll be happy to do it if somebody else doesn't want to do it. The only drawback on being a delegate is that you have to stay until 12:30 on Friday afternoon, where everybody else goes home at 9:00. Just kidding. But I'd be happy to throw my name in there as well.
Okay.
I'm also a delegate. If someone wants to be a delegate, I think I'd be an alternate.
Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good to go. I responded right away, so, okay. Well, I think that we ought to name our delegate and alternate tonight, since Jeremy has offered to be the delegate. And I guess Randy, did you say Randy was a delegate? Or who would be, who would like to be the alternate, I guess?
I would volunteer to be the alternate.
Then I think that would work, that Jeremy's the alternate and Jeremy is the delegate.
Yeah, the Council could appoint two alternates if you so desire.
I think we got two reliable people. One of them will be there.
Okay.
Very good. Okay.
So I don't think we need a motion, I think the mayor can just make that.
Okay.
Or actually, does the League want to vote?
I think it's, I think we have to vote.
Just to be safe, let's have a vote.
Okay. All those in favor of the delegate and alternate?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I think we need a motion in a second.
Motion. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
We can just do a motion in a second, and then we can do all in favor.
Okay.
I will motion for Jeremy to be the delegate and Jordan to be the alternate.
Thank you.
Okay.
Seconds.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Item six. I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Borat to come over and talk about CDBG.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, staff is bringing an item back to Council with regards to CDBG. Back in May 1st, staff is asking for Council's recommendation to reallocate previous funding from CDBG funds that we have received in for '16, '17, '18, '19. At the time, Council gave staff directions to go back and re-promote the program to the mobile estates, also known as fairways estates, to see if maybe to entice potentially to get more applicants to apply for the funding. A total of five did apply. Unfortunately, however, none of them met the qualifications per County EDA. And unfortunately, County EDA was supposed to be here tonight, but they're a no-show. So I was hoping maybe they can kind of be here to maybe explain the, as to why. But in the staff report, it's pretty self-explanatory as to why they weren't qualified. So staff has recommended to go back and seek Council's approval to maybe reallocate the funding back towards the accessibility review report on the projects that are listed in there.
Questions? The ADA report, that's what you're referring to?
Yes.
Is there a cost to the items that are listed in that report?
There isn't. The report only listed what, only identified what needs to be repaired or rehabbed, but the cost has yet to kind of be determined. County, however, did offer something in addition to this. They're willing to upfront the entire cost of all the projects that are in the report if Council chooses so. That is something that they're willing to do. And what basically how that works, any future allocation will just go towards paying that cost back. So we have a choice of either moving forward with just the allocation that's presented here right now, or we can even move forward if we wanted to with the, a full allocation which has yet to be determined on all the projects that are listed in the report.
Who compiled that report? It's quite extensive.
Interwestern.
That's very good.
So in regards to future CDBG funds, what would that do if we allocate funds to be taking care of the entire project? Would we then jeopardize the possibility of being able to give funds to Helping Hands in the future then?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. That's my first question. The second question is, is what was the, what was the outcome? So we got, we got five folks that responded to the mailer that was sent, right?
Correct.
I'm seeing here that the only one person didn't respond. You try to get a hold, left a message. Everyone else just doesn't meet the standards that they're looking at. So we've...
We gave a deadline. The County EDA requested that we put a deadline in the, in the mailer that was sent out, which was June 30th. They needed to provide all, they, Habitat, you remember, was the, was the organization that was overseeing the home repair program for the city of Canyon Lake. All the, all the documents had to be given by Habitat to the county by July 19th, and unfortunately, nobody met that deadline.
Did they, did the applicants know that there was a deadline?
Yes, it was, it was, it was in the flyer. It was clear, bold, and red, and it had a deadline.
Was it just due to lack of preparation on their part?
I don't know. You know, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I mean, maybe the, I have the information I can probably get from Habitat. But part of what they have to do is communicate with the applicants, get all the documents that are necessary. If people are unresponsive and unfortunately don't meet the deadline, then that kind of disqualifies them from any, from any funding. County EDA sort of was involved in some of the initial application that was going back between them and Habitat, and there was nothing that really stood out that made them think that maybe we should kind of hold off. I mean, for the most part, nobody met the qualifications and so.
Mike, help me, I'll refresh my memory. I know we've gone back and forth on this. Are the funds able to be rolled over to the next year?
Well, see, that's kind of part of the issue. HUD doesn't like to see funds that are not moving or being used and being, these are from '16, '17, '18.
Right.
They want to see these funds being utilized the moment that we receive the funding. So what the County EDA has been doing is, has been doing extensions, but I think we're sort of kind of running out of those extensions at this point. So they just want to see activity. They want to see this money moving, doing something for the community.
So if we, you know, the list that InterWest compiled for us on some of the things that we can fix, if we took some of the allocations, not all of them, say 20%, 30%, would that be suffice in moving funds around for them to kind of get off the back a little bit, and then we could put in Helping Hands if needs be? Because I know they're starting the process right now. We've been in contact with them.
Yes.
Going for, for the, for the next batch, and that could be transferred over to them for that amount as well?
That would be a question for EDA to answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think that would be a good move, at least in my opinion, to not utilize all of it. And if it's, if it's just a movement that we got to do, we maybe fix a couple of the top priorities on the, on the list, but we keep those funds intact so we can really help out a local, you know, program like Helping Hands with some of these assets, and then also get them in line to receive those funds down the road. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Darcy?
I agree.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Mike, thanks for the work on this.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'll go. I think that, I guess we've got public comments at this point, and then we will bring it
back to us, and we'll give you direction as far as which way to go.
We have Nancy Horton.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I represent Helping Hands. Ted and I serve on the Board of Directors. We serve 800 people. Coming Saturday morning, we will be packing 2,000 bags of groceries each, about 20 pounds each. And we deliver them to seniors all over the county who are in need. They're called food fragile. They're people who don't have the money to pay for their food, their either mortgage rent, or their medications. So they typically eat one meal a day and try to pay the rest. I'm in, I'm the recipient of many people's pension letters, and they, they're typically living on $800 to $900 a month. So in March, I began to work for the County Department of Social Services, Adult Protection Services. I get calls from the social workers in addition to giving them food, which I deliver myself. I have put together a group of handymen who do work that is required. We fixed roofs. We built four ramps for people in wheelchairs who can't get out of their own homes. We have installed a hot water heater for people that were going for a month without hot water. And on next Monday, my husband and two other Canyon Lake residents are building a fence for a lady who has a fence that's fallen down. Homeless people actually get into her backyard, and the purpose is to keep the city from fighting her. We pay for these things ourselves, because Helping Hands doesn't have a fund either for a new warehouse, which they need, or to do extra projects. The food, we take care of. Anybody who needs food, we always make sure they have food. Emergency people, people in Canyon Lake who've had motorcycle accidents that are in need of food, we deliver food to them. We visit. We have people that we just visit for companionship. I think this is a vital source. Every day that I wake up, I think the phone will ring, I'll get a call. Maybe a person who has been removed from a home by Department of Social Services because his sister was abusing him, and he was moved to the home of his niece, and he had no clothes or shoes with him, removed in his pajamas. And Ted and I went to Costco, bought him clothes, and delivered them to his home. I'm not saying this for everybody to think what good people we are. We just respond to needs whenever we get the call. And there are needs. And this money that the City Council has available to it can feed people, can keep their houses from falling down around them, can build a ramp so that they can get their wheelchairs out to their front yard or their back patio. I think the city should have, should feel an obligation to do these things. And we failed over the last two years to get funding from the city for Helping Hands. Ted and I have also volunteered for nine months, nine years, I'm sorry, with Hope, delivering food to seniors. And we have seen that program shrink from 55, when we started, to 20 now. We no longer do that mission because we feel we can be more helpful with Helping Hands. So I urge you to sequester some money that would be available for Helping Hands to apply in whatever month, September, October, whenever we get our new CDBG funds, because it's a lifeline for people. It's the difference between eating or not eating, being able to live in their home or not. So I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other public comments?
I have no other questions.
Okay. Bring it back to staff. Direction to staff, Council?
Some direction to staff council?
Yeah, I think, you know, my original comment stands in regards to just allocating the least amount of funds we can to move the counselor around a little bit to show that we're showing some type of activity, whether it's, you know, fixing one of our staircases or something. But try to keep as much of that fund intact as possible so when Helping Hands does get approved, which we are working hard, Mike, and then we have been to make that happen, there's going to be more funds for them to be a part of.
And just as a reminder, these projects are not just, you know, projects for, they're for the need, for special people, people that are ADA. We're doing things for, for the right people, for the community, for, for the ones in need. So these projects are not just projects that we're doing just because, they're intended for, for our ADA residents. So please keep that in mind as well.
Have we been cited for any of these things?
No, no. We just don't, we just don't want to lose the funds.
Yeah.
For not spending, for not allocating.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, but to answer your question, Councilman Aaron Krenz said, no. You know, until you rehab, if you do a rehab, that opens up to those types of things. But being that we're not doing anything, there's nothing that, that has come forward.
Okay. And I think that as a motion, I would propose that we allocate 20% of the funds that, if that percentage works for the ADA projects and hopefully hold the others for Helping Hands if they can get the paperwork in, in order so that that can be the designated charity in that work.
Again, that's probably something I'll just have to bring forward to county EDA and see what they tell me. If it works then-
Direction from council is to spend some money on the ADA project.
Correct, yes.
But leave the bulk of the money for the Helping Hands for-
How else I get that?
Yeah. So if we can't come up with a percentage, I think that's the goal. That's our goal.
I will, like I said, I wish county EDA was here tonight, but should we? I'll find out from them and I can get that percentage for us.
Might you bring that, do you want to bring it back or we just?
What do you think of us?
We can do that too.
Bring it back?
Well, you know, we're kind of prolonging this whole thing.
I know, I know.
Let's just, let's just make it that we'll say 20% and if that doesn't work, then we'll have to amend it.
20% towards ADA project.
Rest, rest put back in our fund to hold until the paperwork is properly in order so that we can identify the charities that could be recipients of that fund.
I'll, I'll bring that to county EDA.
Okay. I need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item six, I'm sorry, to follow the mayor's motion with Councilmember Bonner absent.
Okay, thank you. Item seven. Mike, you're on.
Okay. Tonight, staff just wants to give a quick overview, brief overview of Railroad Canyon Road and some of the things that we've been doing over the past year or two. Things that have been identified under finance planning, things that have been identified throughout the, well, past staff of things that have been in desperate, desperate need. First project is, is the pump station. It's, it's completed as of right now. When I got here about three years ago, we had a pump station that the manufacturer was no longer in service. The programming was outdated and nobody knew how to, to run it. Fortunately, the city did have some service agreement with a company called Control Pump and they have, from time to time, have been overseeing the entire pump station as best as they could. But the, but the control unit itself was in dire need of new, a new update because our motors were running, were running 24/7, not regulating and just wasting energy. And over time, I think we probably would have lost them, you know, a few, few years later. So we updated the entire control unit. So we have a whole new brain per se, monitor. It's more up to date. It's, it's, it's accessible through, through wifi. You can log in and retrieve information, which is very, very crucial. We had a nutrient injector that was inside the pump station but wasn't even running. It had, it has a reservoir filled with nutrient, but it was never pumping. Trying to figure out why that is or why that was, was, still to this day, I can understand why it was never even functioning. So we had to get it refurbished and up and running again and now all our plants are now getting nutrients throughout Railroad Canyon Road. Another thing too, we've done too as well, council at one point was asking us to look into maybe some irrigation systems for our ponds. We kind of determined that the cost was going to be a little bit more than what we initially So fortunately, EVNWD has sort of kind of stepped in and has agreed to, to treat the ponds maybe once or three times a year depending on algae growth. And I think that's going to help suffice the issues we were having with algae. The algae was getting so bad at the pump station that it was actually clogging our filtration system that's in there. So this is going to be crucial for, for future. As I mentioned to you before, Control Pump has been a service that we've had here as it was doing annual maintenance for the city for, for some time. They have, are now come on board with council's approval in, in this current budget to monitor the entire pump station and to determine whether or not we're getting leaks, excessive water usage, so on and so forth. So every day, I'm getting some form of report that's telling me whether the pump station is running efficient or not. Since the inception, which was in July 1st, I've already gotten four calls that we've had leaks out there. So that's what this monitoring has been doing. It's actually detecting everything that's going out through, out through the pump station and our irrigation system. It's notifying us and letting us know that we need to respond and take care of things. All this again too, was actually funded through gas taxes initially done and approved through finance planning, I think it was last year. New signage. This was a, a project that was brought forward by city council. It was to add a west and eastbound sign near the main gate intersection. It's a flashing solar powered sign, which is, which is great. So it's energy efficient and it's just another added safety for our folks that utilize the, the crossing of their golf carts to the county center. So in addition to kind of the radar signs that we kind of put up in hopes of deterring people to slow down, this is another addition, which is a great project that I think is catching people's attention out there too.
The westbound sign?
Yes.
The tree that is to the east of that needs to be trimmed.
So, so this is already, this is already a discussion that I've had with our landscape folks. They are to start maintaining the tree that's, that's westbound and there's some brush that's eastbound that needs to be trimmed as well. So they're aware of it, so they're good, they should be trimming it here sometime soon.
Yeah, any of our signage that we've got posted, it's obstructed. It really dilutes its effectiveness.
Yeah. We had some of that issue with one of our radar signs, our, our westbound radar sign by our monument, boundaries that may have been, was being blocked by a tree that belonged to a resident that was over the sound wall. So we, they've actually had trimmed that tree since, so. Landscape, ongoing. It's, it's going to be an ongoing thing. It's going to be something that we're always going to have to do. But just recently, we added new mulch. We've added new drought tolerant plants. We reconfigured all the irrigation system. We had a lot of drip lines that were just going to no plants at all whatsoever, so we capped them or we added more plants in, in those areas. So we're being a little bit more water conscious out there. We added and installed a irrigation controller. This allows our landscape crew to be able to turn off valves throughout Railroad Canyon Road if, if a leak is detected. We've had a lot of repair of electrical lines too as well, believe it or not. I'm not sure how those are occurring. In fact, they, you know, our landscape crews don't even know as well too. But sometimes I think, we get a lot of people that, that go into our medians with their vehicles and it's quite possible that maybe that's how they're, they're, they're causing all this problem with our electrical lines. So right now, as far as I know, all our electric lines are-
Did, speaking of that, where westbound below the church, they hit the wall? They tear out the, the landscaping and the irrigation lines? They ripped, looked like they ripped them out. They hit the wall. You can see they hit it, bounced off the wall.
I was just told today that there was another accident over the weekend. I'm not sure if it's-
This one was, this one was done just here recent because I came up the hill and you could see where they hit the wall. Must have bounced back out into the street, probably kept going.
We've had a couple of scuff marks on our walls.
This one's pretty high.
Okay. We'll, we'll have to look at it. We'll have to look at it, yeah. But, but I, you know, I say that this is an ongoing thing because literally I get calls all the time from our landscape folks or that, oh, we've got another car hit our tree or we had a tree down not too long ago. I feel like it's only a matter of time before they hit one of our monuments, but I think the monument will win though, because it's actually pretty terrible. Okay. And again, these are all projects that are funded through gas tanks. Eastbound radar sign. So back in February, as I was driving in, I noticed it was laying down and turned out we had a, a driver at UI. He was, he was actually, he was hitting several areas and Nelson R worked his way to Canyon Lake and he took out our, our sign. You know, unfortunately, that's, that's a sore subject for me because that sign has been an ongoing project. What I mean by that, we were having issues for a while that that sign was not detecting the vehicles that were coming down. And it took me a while to figure out and troubleshoot this, the, the issue. And once we figured it out, a week later it gets taken out. So, you know, it's an unfortunate thing, but it happens. Yeah, it's sort of a sore subject for me on this one because it took months to figure out.
A quick one on that, did we get cost recovery?
We did. Yeah, we did. So, you know, I filed a claim immediately. The only problem is when you file claims, they, they need to see the, the sheriff's report before they can actually follow through with the claim. But when we did get it, I did submit it and we were able to recuperate our, our costs. I think it was somewhere like around close to $10,000. So, so the code is already in order. In fact, it's, it's actually here. It's already upstairs and it's going to be installed hopefully within the next week or two. Round iron fence. So some of you may remember this project. Mayor Green, you do.
I have it listed here.
Yeah, I know. So if you remember back in October, we pulled this item because the bid that was put together at the time by Charles Evans Associates didn't accurately convey the, the work that needed to be done. So, and as I listed there, the north side requires paint and powder coat only. I think we've kind of determined that it doesn't require anything other than that. So that'll save us some cost from having to actually rebuild and repair it. However, the side, the south side, it is in dire need of rebuilding and repairing. So I'm currently working on the bids for that right now. Waiting for, for specs from our, our new folks, our new senior folks with Tri Lakes. And as soon as we, we get this thing going, again too, this is funded through gas tanks.
Same type of panels that are ready made instead of customs.
Yeah, it, it won't change. It'll be the same as to what we did on the last phase.
That's good because then if somebody rips them out, then we can put it out.
And if I recall, I thought these were going to be, in the past, I think it was going to be two additional phases. I think maybe what we're going to do here would just be one phase all entirely.
Right.
Another project that's not on Railroad Canyon Road, but I did wanted to kind of bring forward and mention it. This is another project that was brought forward by city council. It's in regards to our, the traffic signal that gets in Canyon Lake right north. This, this is the entrance to Eastport and the entrance to Hotty Murphy. There was some issues with some potential traffic. I'm not sure if we, we've had collisions, but we've been getting a lot of reports that, the folks that are coming out of Hotty Murphy that are turning left on Getz Road were turning at the same time as the folks that were coming out of Canyon Lake right north that were turning right on Getz Road. So to, to, to avoid that, I reached out to our city planner, Jim Morrissey, to get in contact with the city of Menifee to, to see if they can kind of figure out a solution. And they did and they actually quickly, well, I know this project was brought to us a long time ago, but their response was somewhat quick and they were, they understood the situation. So the project is moving forward right now. We're kind of waiting on Riverside County Transportation, who's overseeing the, the project for the city of Menifee because they, they actually do the lighting for the city of Menifee. So this is a joint project that's going to be co-share between city of Canyon Lake and city of Menifee. Fortunately for us too as well, this will be funded through gas tanks also. And that concludes my overview. Questions?
Can this be available on the website?
I can definitely make that one available.
Any other questions from council?
Awesome job. Good job, Mike. And you also got the 50 mile, 55 mile an hour sign down.
Yes, oh, I forgot to mention that too.
It's down.
Yeah. When, when our city planner talked to their-
They took the sign, they took the post and everything.
Yeah.
It's perfect.
Yep.
Did you say you were going to raise it to 55?
No.
65, Jack.
Yeah, you got to stay at 45.
Jack, it was the city of Menifee?
Yes.
And that is a 55 mile, but they were going into our 45? So we-
But it caused the golf carts to fall.
I know, but we wanted, we removed the 55 mile an hour sign.
They had a sign that was conflicting with our- Yeah, they had a 55 mile an hour sign that sort of was conflicting with our, our first westbound radar sign that had a 45 mile an hour sign. So they were gracious enough to take it down because they knew it was conflicting too. So there's no more of this 55 mile an hour sign.
Any other questions for, for staff? Okay. Any public comments on this item?
Just one thing on the stoplights and so on, on the main entrance going into Canyon Lake, the left turn lane, there's something wrong with the signal. It's been running for a little while. What is happening, the left turn will come on and only one car can go through and it's off. And it happened, it doesn't happen all the time, but it needs to have an adjustment there. In fact, we got a laugh and Chuck Bryant and I were setting the second car back and the change, we couldn't go through.
Okay, okay.
But it needs to be checked.
Okay. Mike, you got that? The left turn lane on Pocket going into the main gate?
Okay.
I don't think we have any roll call items on this. It's just a staff report. Good job, Mike. Glad you were getting the fence fixed. Okay, item number eight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, we sometimes take payments at city hall. It could be for a business license, it could be for permits in the building department. We accept cash, we accept check, and we also accept credit card. Up, up to now, the city has been using the Square system to process credit cards. And with the Square system, the city gets charged a fee every time someone uses the system. And so in the past, the city has, has implemented a convenience fee that we charge to residents. Our, our attempt there was to, to recoup our costs. Well, as we're transitioning to the iWork software, iWork doesn't use Square. iWork uses a processing, a credit card processing company called PayRock that's integrated into the iWork program. And the, the PayRock system works a little bit more-
And the PayRock system works a little bit more streamlined and it charges the customer directly. Currently, that rate is three and a half percent. And so the item for you tonight would eliminate the convenience fees that we have established. It would eliminate, we haven't placed currently a limit on how much we accept in credit card payments to kind of cap our liability there. With this new system, there's no need to have that cap because it's just, we're not developing there. It's just charging the customer directly for that fee is the actual cost of fee. So in front of you tonight, also it's a recommendation to eliminate that cap on what people can pay. We actually have a business that wants to pay all of his transactional taxes by credit card. So it's quite a big number. So we recommend that the council adopt these resolutions, amending or pass their convenience fees for credit card payments and eliminating the charge on it.
Okay. Comments from council?
How does the city know what the fee is going to be? Are we supposed to notify the customer what the exact fee is?
Well, the fee is always the three and a half, well, currently set three and a half percent of whatever the transaction amount is.
That's not changing then?
No, it's a set three and a half percent and they will be notified. There'll be a notice right there at the counter and they'll, if someone wishes to avoid paying that fee, they can still pay by cash or check as well.
I see. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Need a motion in a second. Oh, excuse me, public comments on item number eight? Any public comments? Seeing none? Okay, I need a motion in a second.
So moved. Excuse me.
I'll second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaroncress?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-25 with councilmember Bonner absent.
Item nine, Mr. City Mayor.
All right. Back in February of 2006, the city council purchased two Champion 19-foot boats. These boats have been used by special enforcement to patrol the area commonly referred to as the Met Lake. Boats have also been used to assist PWA marine patrol during events like the Fourth of July when there's extra boat activity and they've requested our assistance. In recent months, it's become evident that the means of the city have shifted a little bit. Enforcement has let me know that really they can do with just one with one boat. At the same time, the council's direction has been to improve relationships regionally and do more diplomatic outreach. And so back in May, when we had our budget workshop, the concept was brought up that perhaps we should sell one of the boats and apply those proceeds towards the purchase of both. It'd be more conducive to giving tours and diplomatic outreach, also economic development, enticing economic development. So, and that suggestion was met with a positive response from the council. So that was included in the budget for this fiscal year. We included $18,000 to be added to the proceeds of the sale of one of the boats. So staff was recommending at this point that the city move forward with the plans outlined above. Staff has prepared one of the boats for sale. It has been, all of the lettering has been removed, the enforcement lettering, the lights have been removed, PA system has been repaired and will stay with the boat. And the POA has actually expressed interest in purchasing it. While the city could pursue a number of different avenues of selling the boat, council has directed staff that it has set as a goal, improving relations with the POA. And so staff recommends that we move forward with declaring one of our boats surplus and that he authorized me to go into negotiations with the POA for the sale of the boat.
Okay. Question?
My question is, do we have an obligation to solicit other bids for this or is this an arms length transaction that we're doing?
Let me ask the city attorney to address that question.
Okay, thank you.
The short answer to your question is no. The city council can find this the public benefit to declare it surplus and disposment in this way. If you look at the language actually of the resolution, it does require that the city manager negotiate a price that provides maximum return to the city. So there isn't a blank check to just give this boat away. He does have to have a basis for the sale price. If he's unable to negotiate a sale price that provides that maximum return, then he is directed to proceed pursuant to the ordinance that the city has in place, which would require that he solicit bids for others. The city council is within its rights to direct this commander proceeding this way.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Any public comments on this item? Okay, hearing none? Any motion in a second, please?
No.
I'll second. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaroncress?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-26 with councilmember Bonner absent.
Okay. Item number ten.
Yes. The BLM. As you know, for some years, the discussion of whether or not the city should acquire the BLM property within city limits has taken place and not a lot of movements happened on it. Mr. Wamsley helped me set up a meeting with our representative from the BLM, our field manager that represents this area. We had a very good meeting. He brought me up to speed on the discussions that have happened on the topic in the past, some of the preliminary work that's been done on the site in the past, and what we would need to do moving forward. I was kind of surprised to learn that the city has never actually officially submitted an application to purchase the land. And so step number one in the process is for the city to submit a letter of interest to the BLM describing the exact parcels we're interested in purchasing, what we want to do with the land and how it benefits us, how it benefits the BLM and how it benefits the community. So in your pack of this evening, our two draft letters, staff decided to approach each parcel separately. So you'll see a resolution for each of the parcels and a letter of interest for each of the parcels. We did that just in case one of the parcels got held up for some reason. We didn't want, you know, we wanted to be able to move forward on the other parcel without that being held up as well. After these letters are submitted, we will be put in the queue somewhere. Where in the queue we end up depends on a number of factors. We're told that we won't be at the bottom of the queue because we have been discussing this for some time and they appreciate our help controlling and helping to clean up the BLM land. Also, this land is not particularly useful to the BLM and it is a little bit of a headache. There are constantly issues out there with people camping and lighting campfires and illegally launching personal motocraft and watercraft and things of that nature. And those kind of activities have been increasing recently. So I think our chances of getting a favorable outcome are very good, but the timeline is really very much up in the air. I think once we submit this letter and we kind of get some sense of where we stand, there might also, I might also come to you in a future month with a request for a legislative plan, a strategy to help make this a higher priority for the BLM. It's very political, is our understanding. But this is the first step. So staff recommends that the council approve these resolutions and authorize me to submit these letters of interest to the BLM.
That's, council? I think it's overdue. Unfortunately, we've been tracking this project for a long time and it's the first time we heard we had to submit a letter. So I think it's time that we do it. I'm glad you broke it into parcels. Very smart. And I do think the legislative piece is another one that we ought to pursue. Any comments from the public? Do we have a card?
Yes, Mr. Jack Wamsley.
First of all, for the past 20 years, we've been battling this. In fact, when we started our city, my job to put the boundaries and I put the BLM property inside of our city limits for a purpose, which has not been very successful for the past few years. But I've made a real hard effort to have all of the council members meet the director of Southern California BLM. And I think that we have a good reputation with Doug Herron, who actually looks over almost a million acres in Southern California. And Doug and I are very good friends and I've gone out of my way to try to have him come down and have lunch with our group and so that you get to know him. And he works with us and I'm really glad to see, you know, we're working with the letter and I know that Chris is able to pick up the phone and talk to Doug and get things done. One of the things that, with reference to the letter, we have to have some kind of a plan that goes with that letter. And that incorporates several different divisions within LA County, I mean Riverside County. Got my old department in there. But anyway, if you see, fit Chris, I'd be more than happy to volunteer to help you with that. I've been through all those different divisions and I know them and I know they know me. And I'd be more than happy to help you with that program. And I'm just glad to see that we're moving. We do have backing in Washington. I have a rent in Washington that we can use. We're not going to use them until we got something to use them for. It's good to see the letter and I hope everybody votes for it. Give her a shot.
Okay. Any other public comments?
No other comments.
Okay. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaroncress?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolutions 2019-27 and 2019-28 with councilmember Bonner absent.
All right. Public hearing. Item number 11, Prop 218 Public Hearing. The following is a Prop 218 Public Hearing to consider the adoption of Resolution Number 2019-29, approving the annual rate adjustment and confirmation of collection of residential solid waste charges on the tax rules. Public hearing is now open and it'll be open at 19:36. Staff presentation, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We received a letter dated April 30th from CRNR requesting an annual price adjustment for residential standard service of 25 cents per month to cover CPI and an increase of 16 cents per month to cover high disposal rate charged by the Riverside Canyon landfill. These charges are fairly normal for our franchise agreement with CRNR. But in addition to these regular increases, CRNR is requesting what they call an extraordinary increase as a result of what we're seeing in the world markets with recycling. China has stopped buying our recyclables. Most recyclables from the West Coast of the United States go to China. And as a result, the value of those recyclables has plummeted. So to offset this, CRNR is requesting additional increase of 54 cents per month. When you take it all together, the requested increase totals 95 cents a month for residential standard service. That raises the rate from $23.12 to $24.07 per month, which is a 1.8% increase. Similarly, for commercial, industrial and multifamily residential refuse service, the typical three cubic yard bin will increase from $129.59 to $131.64, which is an increase of $2.05 or 1.6%. City staff followed the Proposition 218 process. Alex Rikovich from CRNR is in the audience this evening. If the council has any questions of CRNR.
Okay, questions to staff by council? Okay. No questions? Anybody have testimony for proponents? Jack, do you have a card?
He does, yes.
He does have a card.
With reference to CRNR, CRNR backed our community for almost 30 years. They came to our city and offered us the price for our people that was lower than anybody around us when they started. And they've been doing excellent in also participation. When you need something, for instance, in our emergency preparedness, when you need something from them, usually I get a call and I'll go over and talk with them and they write us a check. We built our emergency golf cart with the help of them and I think they gave us a check of $3,000 or $4,000 at that time. Along with that, which a lot of people don't know, the storage bins that we have within our POA, which is about, I'm going to take a guess, is somewhere around 10. Normally, those storage bins would run out for a couple hundred dollars a month. For 25 years, we have not paid one dime. The last time I got one, he said, "Jack, you got more damn containers there than the whole city to make it." So my comment was, we need... Anyway, I really support the increase. Everything else is increasing, water. And this company is beyond the service that you normally get from an organization like that.
That's my recommendation. All right. Any other proponents?
No other cards.
No other cards. Do we have any cards for proponents?
No cards.
Okay, no cards. So we can skip the response by the proponents. And now we'll go to the public hearing is closed at 19:40. Discussion, council.
I'd like to agree with Mr. Wamsley. Yeah, they've been a terrific sponsor of our city ever since we've become a city. So I don't think they need any more accolades. Jack, it's great doing that every year. So we thank you for that. And thank you too, Alex, for all the good service.
Yeah, it's been a good partnership, so. Any other discussion, council? Okay. Do we have any valid protests that have been received?
I'd just like to point out that notices were mailed to the residents at least 45 days before tonight's public hearing. And as of the close of this public hearing, the city has not received any written protests.
Okay. So I need a motion in a second by council, please, for Resolution Number 2019-29.
I'll put the motion out there.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Aaroncress?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-29 with councilmember Bonner absent.
All right. Item number 12. Adoption of Resolution Number 292019-3, approving of a variance for the Pitts backyard.
Yes. I'd like to have our planning director, Jim Morrissey, give the presentation in a second.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor. Members of the council, this is a variance. The applicant, Mr. Pitts, is proposing to locate a swimming pool in his backyard.
Mayor, if you don't mind, before we begin the item, I believe we do have a recusal on this item.
We do. Okay, that is correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Pitts, I have to leave the room because I have some property that's within the boundaries of your property. So I have to recuse myself at this particular time and not because I don't like you.
Thank you.
You can leave the room if you want. You can just sit there. And then, Mayor, I did want to say, you had asked me as well about whether you needed to recuse yourself and I did review it. You know, you don't have a financial interest.
Correct.
You indicated that you knew the applicant.
I do.
And while you don't have a financial interest, so the political reform act is not implicated, we do have to, under the principles of procedural due process, make sure that we have an impartial decision maker here, review the case law. Simply having, knowing the applicant does not mean you need to recuse yourself.
Okay.
So in my opinion, you can remain.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry, Duke.
No, this is probably right.
No, this is probably right.
Jim, I've got to announce that the public... This hearing has opened at 19:43. Now you get to go. Sorry, I got these...
That's okay. So as I mentioned, the applicant has proposed a rear and swimming pool within the required five yard setback of both the rear property line and the residence. As noted in the staff report, under the recommendation portion, I've excluded the spa simply because the ordinance calls out swimming pool without the spa. So the spa can be there. It's not like a residence that needs both a garage and a home to operate. You can have spa, you can have a pool, or you can have both. So we're not looking at the setbacks related to spa at all, just the location of the pool. So the applicant is on a knuckle area, there's approximately a 17-foot rear yard area. And as you'll see by the next exhibit, he wishes to place the pool within approximately a foot of the rear yard setback and about four feet from what I've termed as the residence. And I'd like to discuss that briefly because this issue of setbacks from the building come up fairly often. The code indicates that there's to be a five-foot setback from the rear property line and the dwelling. In the code, the dwelling is defined as the residence or portion thereof. Staff looks at a structure and anything connected to that structure as part of the residence. We're not looking at habitable space where we would exclude, say, the garage or storage room or patio area. We simply look at all that as the residence. So and when I say portion thereof, I think about a storage facility. You've seen a lot of storage facilities where you come up to the office, the office is part of a home that is there. The home is built into the storage structure. So when I say a portion of the residence or a portion thereof, just because in that particular case, the dwelling is attached to the storage facility doesn't mean that the dwelling now includes the entire storage facility. It's a portion thereof. So I think that's an important consideration. We can discuss that in greater detail if the council has a question about that. So what are we essentially looking at? Again, the setback, the dwelling, and the constraints that currently exist. Also, it's worth noting, I had mentioned in staff report, that simply because someone may fill up their property with a large home or other accessory structures doesn't mean that they can automatically continue to have additional facilities such as a pool. So if they've constrained themselves, then that's what I would consider beyond the purview of a variance. It's kind of a self-imposed hardship. That isn't the case in this particular circumstance, and I'll go into that. So what is the basis for a variance approval? Typically, it's a hardship. Ordinances pretty much, unless so stipulated, are based upon fairly flat rectangular pieces of property. When you start getting into parcels that have five sides, steep slopes, access restrictions because of topography or distance from intersections, then you start having a constraint that maybe other people don't have to operate under. So as we look at this, again, the property itself is not unique from the standpoint that there are knuckles, what I'll call knuckle lots, lots where a street may turn. That's typical residential subdivisions, which are relatively flat. The lot area is about the same as other lots in the area. But one thing that was of interest to me, quite frankly, when I started looking, or before I started looking at this, I thought, well, it's a variance. I'm a little gun-shy in recommending approval on variances simply because there needs to be a hardship. Well, in trying to formulate the reason for denial, I came up with the reason for approval. And the reason for approval is quite simple. The lot depth is not what the other lots have in the area. What I have on this exhibit is really reflected, what's in your staff report, the audience can't see it. But some lots in the area that have pools have a particular depth. And the two numbers I provide here, such as with lot 1, 120 and 112, deal with the length of the side property line, indicating the depth. Well, if you compare the top four, lots 1 through 4, to the subject property, there's a noticeable difference. The applicant, for example, is off five total feet. If they had five to 10 extra feet, they would look similar to these other dimensions and have plenty of room for a pool, would necessitate a variance. The other reason for this is when you look at the subject property, and I'm going to leave the podium in a moment and kind of point out what I'm referring to, is as you come around, co-view the address 30211, you'll notice that there's an extra bulge as part of the design of the roadway to ensure proper traffic movement. That really condenses the length of the lot. So if you look at lots, and I'll point them out nearby, they move back in line. So you have a lot of additional offset from that that you don't make up next to the lake. And that, when you look at other knuckles or cul-de-sac lots in Canyon Lake, those type of lots typically have much larger parcels. This one does not. And I was quite shocked that it did. So let me go up to the screen for a moment. So what I was referring to is this extra bulge right here. So if you come here, you have about 30-foot half-width street offset. Here you have a much greater one, it's very, very noticeable. This is the applicant's property. So typically, you might see a lot configuration in which it's much deeper. The radius is out here. In this case, the radius is here and it's being pushed in. So the lot area is adequate in size. The depth meets the development requirements. But one of the findings is whether or not they are able to use their property in a manner that other people in the area can utilize their property. And when you look at the depth and you're discussing pools, where are pools located? Well, he has adequate area in part because of the flaring of the lot, but he's not going to put the pool in the side yard. The setback in front is typically just taken up with the driveway area and the entrance to the home. The rear yard is where the pool is located. That's what's being affected by this. So this reduced depth of, say, 10 to 15 feet is pretty significant. So staff has findings in the staff report. The findings are twofold. The zoning ordinance has two particular findings. State law has three. Wanted to make sure that we had covered the bases. It pretty much reflect what I indicated. Variances are not for use of the property. In other words, we want a different type of use, multiple-family, commercial. No. The purpose of it is a physical issue that brings a hardship onto the property. So we believe that there is a hardship in this case. We recommend that you adopt the next resolution in line, approving the variance. And one particular note, it is 19-35, so on the agenda it says 33. In the hearing notice, it said 35. What was advertised in the newspaper is 35. So the 33 that you see in there is a typo. To allow the one-foot rear yard setback in about four feet from both the patio cover and the storage area, we have the plans. They've been plan-checked. So when the plans come in, they're consistent with that. Upon approval, the council, if that's your desire, then that's what would be approved. The environmental action, we don't foresee any physical change. The project would be exempt. The applicant is in the audience and can respond to any questions. Baylor went out to residents within 300 feet, hence I think the vice, the protemp received notice as well. I'll be happy to respond to any questions.
By the way, finishing on the staff report, I'd like to just add one thing, if I may. We're starting to see more of these kind of issues. Canyon Lake is unique, and a lot of our properties are, I guess what I would call, constrained. When the city incorporated in 1990, we adopted all of the county's ordinances at that time. And we haven't updated them since or done our own zoning. So not only do we still have the county zoning, but we still have the county zoning from 1990. So we run into issues because it's never been tailored to our unique community. In the council's discussion tonight, I would really like to hear how the council would like staff to address one particular issue moving forward, and that is how we define dwelling. An issue that's come up now a couple times is that, similar to the situation you see here tonight, you have a house and we have required five-foot setback from the dwelling to build a pool. But how do we define dwelling? How is that interpreted? A very common way of interpreting dwelling, which is the way our planning director interprets it, is that when you have something attached to the house, such as a patio cover or garage or a storage room, that that is part of the dwelling. And so if you have a house and you have a patio cover, and the patio cover has footings, and those footings then need to be at least five feet away from the pool, and in our constrained locks, that's challenging. But that's the way dwelling is commonly interpreted. And the applicants get upset, and they go to our planning director and they're upset, and then they don't get satisfaction, so they come to the city manager. And the city manager doesn't feel comfortable for ruling the planning director who's background and education is planning. And so we have kind of an ongoing issue here. Ultimately, the solution is, for these kind of situations and many others, that we really need to do our own zoning. It's an expensive project, so it's an issue of finding the funding, but it's something we know that we need to do at some point. In the meantime, I'd be curious to hear the council's thoughts on the matter.
Is that a pretty good description of the issue, Jim? Sounds good. Okay.
Questions of the council, who are planning person? And the question is, obviously, we know our zoning is dated, and it was a cookie-cutter process that they did. They took it off, changed the name, protect the innocent, but our community is different. I think we probably need to develop a language that could be applied to situations like this that would be easily interpreted, that it is allowable or not. And I don't know if that's amendment to what we currently have. I don't know, there's probably somebody out there that's already done it in some form or passion. And I think we have to move forward to try to make this so it doesn't become an ongoing thing that we have with these approvals.
Yeah, how many of these are we getting regularly? Have we pulled stats on how many times we're faced with this issue?
Well, very specifically, the pool issue, I had a new one come in this week.
Right.
But there have been similar issues with staircases in the front yard and a number of other things. Just in short time I've been here. It's kind of an ongoing issue that keeps coming up.
I do think we need to research a funding source for all of our compliance documents and bring them up to speed.
Yeah, I think we're definitely outdated.
Yeah.
In that regards.
So it's making the process very difficult. Do we have any proponents? I think we've already got Jim, he's the proponent.
No, the applicant is in the audience.
Okay. Does he...
Would you like to speak, Mr. Pitts?
If you have questions, and also the engineers here.
I don't, I think the planners, honestly, looked at it, it's a pool. We've got a situation that needed a variance, and you looked at it, it complies with the variance rules. And so is there anybody opposed to it? Any testimony for opponents? No letters, did any letters come back from the people that we sent them to? Okay. Then at that point, I'm going to close the hearing at 19:59. And discussion by council.
The only question that I really have is, Mr. City Manager, I know I called you on this, or she's in the audience too, I messaged her on this too. We're having issues right now with people wanting to build pools on the water, and it's creating some conflict. Is this one of those examples?
No, no, it's not.
Okay. Can you explain a little bit about that for some of our folks in the audience, what we're dealing with?
I could, but since our planning director's here, he'd do a much better job of explaining.
Nicely done. Should we do this, though? Finish this item? Yeah. Clean this up. I do have a question. We talked about, and we've closed it, so we've got a discussion, and we want to continue. But you mentioned a number, I have resolution number 2019-30.
Yeah, the resolution number is different than the number I was referencing. I just have a case number of 19-35.
So it's not 33?
It's not 33.
Okay. Now we've got it. Okay. We'll go back to that item about pools on the water, but I wanted to just clean this one up. So I guess I need a motion second for approval of resolution 2019-30. We'll be happy to put the motion out there. Okay. Call, roll call, please.
Councilmember Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Green?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2019-30 with Councilmember Bonner absent and Mayor Protem Aaron-Crowns abstaining.
Okay, now, back to your pool.
Back to the pool.
Do you want to add the Mayor Protem back in this discussion?
I think he'll be on his way down.
Okay.
But yeah, if you'd like to...
Okay, yeah. With respect to what I'm going to refer to as shoreline development, we have had a number of requests for not only seawalls but swimming pools, different types of structures, including boat houses, fireplaces, fire pits, extended, I don't even know how to call it, patios where you have dining, more or less the extension of a residence down to or close to the water. And it's a little difficult, based upon what's happened throughout the decades, to determine what you can do and not to do based upon what the homeowner views as an opportunity. So we have discussions with them relative to, you're not the property owner. And they simply point to the left or to the right, indicate such and such has done this and so on. Well, we were approached by Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District saying, issue no more permits for anything on our property except seawall renovation or boat dock renovation. And they've prepared a draft procedural policy that they circulated to both POA and us, asking for comments on how a new review procedure would occur. We both provided our comments by the deadline requested. In general terms, our position, I think I could say with respect to the city and the POA, is the POA would like to be more of the focus because they would like to understand what is happening within the Canyon Lake area, whether or not it meets their covenant codes and restrictions and their use of the lake. The district was thinking that it would be individual permitting through both them, the POA, and the city. We would issue the actual building permits as the permit issuing entity. The others would obtain approval based upon whatever their particular specifications were. There's been no identification of a following... There's been no identification of a follow-up meeting with regard to these procedures. So at this time, we continue to tell people that the property owner, the water district, has requested that we not issue any permits. We've received requests, we've plan-checked those requests, they pay for that plan-check, but we've not issued that permit, and we won't issue the permit until the property owner indicates such. So in fact, I had someone today saying, what is happening? They said the same thing to me last week. And the request today was, can I just submit something to the district to get their approval? I said, yes, of course, that's fine. I said, if the property owner says it's okay, and it meets our specifications for design, then we'll be willing to issue the permit. So we're still kind of waiting for an overall policy from the water district to understand how we're to all operate together and not create an additional burden on the property owner, which we kind of felt that it was, the way it was designed would do that, it would be this continuous loop that they could get caught in. Someone would deny it within one of the three entities that a redesign would require, it had to go back through, then someone else would say, no. Well, they couldn't get themselves out of the loop. That's ridiculous. So we hope that maybe filing with the POA, the POA would send it out, they would know, they would communicate with the owners, one of the association members. We would check, just as we always do, once the POA said it was okay, the district acknowledging that okay, we would issue the permit, provided it met our specifications. So that's kind of where we stand.
Have we, I know we've gone full circle, but one, has the encroachment permit, the process changed? Has it, has been in the past? Is it being proposed? Because there's also an encroachment permit, which has to be issued by EVMWD, which is how far you can go out in their zone, I'll call it. Some places is five feet, some places is 10 feet, some places are farther. We actually have got a period of time, very recent here, that where no permits were done and seawalls were put in. Close that loop back up, but are we trying to make a better process for when an applicant comes in, that they're not being run around? Is that what I'm guessing?
That's part of it. I think the district wants to get a little better hold of it, because my conversation with them was, are you trying to do something new? Which is your question. And they said, no, I think we're trying to improve what we have. The way I had understood it, and I'll just refer to myself individually, not anyone else, is that acknowledgement from the POA was always acknowledgement from the district. I don't know how tight that link was. The district and its new policy has itemized things that they want to receive, and I think that's an increase in the documentation that was provided before.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll get it worked out, because it used to be you had to go to the district to get your encroachment permit, which you submitted what you wanted to do. Then you came to the POA, which would deal with the aesthetics, and then you would come to the city for your setbacks to make sure you're all within the parameters. And the final say would be your engineering process that you had to do, but everybody got a stamp at the end. But the beginning of the whole process when you're in that zone started with EVMWD.
Well, the, what some representatives of the POA had indicated to me was, they wanted to be brought into the loop because just people would get their approval from the water district, go build, and they weren't aware of what was happening. So they wanted the district to communicate directly to them about the approval and not the applicant. So that's why they wanted, at least in this draft form, as I understood it, that the applicant would file with them, they would give it to the district, the district would then communicate back to them what was happening, and then they could let it through.
Okay. Well, hopefully, it'll get worked out. I really think, from my perspective, I'm in this zone, I've built in the zone, I've gone through all the steps in that zone, and frankly, it starts with the water department and goes to the POAs in the city, really, because of the structural site. But the buy-off is when you get into their land, and do they allow you to go into that land, it's very specific on what you could do in there, know how will the structure be too far out, and so hopefully, guys, we'll get it worked out. Yes, Jim?
One of the things you definitely have to consider is part of the violations that they feel that they have right now with the water company, was actually grandfathered in when they purchased the property. When the POA relinquished their program to buy the, we had first right of refusal, and we backed off of that to help Elsinore buy it, providing that they accepted the grandfather and the locations of docks and so on and so forth. Now, if a person dock has to be repaired or redone, and he's coming back with a request to the water company, and they're saying, oh no, that's on our property, and wait a minute, that was, I was grandfathered in when you bought the property. So there's, I mean, there's a lot of issues there that you're going to get involved with.
There are, and one of the things that we had talked about, Mrs. Stitt, before you got on board, was the aspect of a homeowner that does build a seawall that we weren't expecting. And then they want to, the person that they're buying it from wants to make sure it's permitted. So I'm glad we're working on it, let's get it streamlined, because we've got new walls, we've got walls that fall over, we have people that want to build houses on the water, I mean, pretty soon they'll be floating buildings out there. So that's why I say we need a process. And I think the three parties in it are well identified, our responsibilities are well identified, and I just think it's just a matter of setting our cooperative agreement amongst us three of how to best move that forward to all of our future applicants and those who are in the queue right now. So my hat's off to you guys. Yes?
I can't really say a lot, because it still is part of litigation, and that's part of what we're trying to work out the final part of with the POA. But I can assure you that it is one of my number-one priorities to get resolved, and I am assured we will have a meeting about it in closed session shortly, so.
Perfect. That honestly, it helps, from a regulatory standpoint, that's us, but from our community standpoint, it really is community-wide to everyone that's in this place. All right, any other questions on that item? Hearing none. City manager comments?
Yes. It has been a busy couple of months, and I have some updates. The move of the administration functions of the office space is substantially complete. We still have a few bare walls, but other than that, I think we're fully moved in and operational. We've completed some planned staffing changes, you met the new staff members earlier this evening. In addition, we have brought on a traffic engineer, Trilake Consulting. We worked with Trilake when we had Charles Abbott, they were a subcontractor under Charles Abbott. When we ended our relationship with Charles Abbott, we hadn't had a traffic engineer. And so we brought Trilake back, contracted directly with them. Brad Brophy is officially our traffic engineer. They are on a as-needed basis, so it doesn't cost us anything unless we need the service. And we've already used them for a few things, they've been very helpful. At the Finance and Planning Committee meeting yesterday, we had a review of our legal counsel's contract. Per the contract, we had to do a review at three months. I would say it was a shiny review. We are enjoying a very good relationship with our new city attorney, not only that, he's saving us lots of money. The contract so far, which they were kind enough to make retroactive February, has saved the city a little over $7,800 so far. And we've done a good job reading in the number of hours we're using from our attorney as well. So I think Steve did a great job estimating the number of hours we would need a month-long basis, and the staff level, we've been trying to do what we can to do more things in-house and limit the number of hours that we need from our attorney. Some housekeeping items, we recently went through and upgraded, updated all our contract folders, every contract we have. We have a folder that has the latest version of that contract and all the information about that contract, those have gotten kind of out of date, and so that has been all completely updated. We have retained our consultant for records retention. We had our consultant at City Hall on August 1st, and that process has started. So Anna, what would you say that's likely to be complete?
The new retention schedule we brought back in September for Council of the Hall.
Fantastic. Computer upgrades have been completed last week and this week. We've upgraded the phones, that has been complete. We've transitioned fully away from TPX, our previous provider, and have gone to a cloud-based phone system, Ring Central, with the exception of the elevator. We can't do cloud-based elevators, so we switched over to Frontier for the elevator phone. But the new phone system has functionality that the old system didn't have, and should be saving us some money. We plan to go out to bid soon for IT services, looking for a higher level of service there at a reduced cost. At the same time, we will also go out to RFP for migrating our servers, our physical servers to the cloud, which will reduce costs and give us more reliability for all our data here. We've eliminated or updated processes in relation to paying our bills so that we're no longer incurring any late fees. Because of our process here and that we only meet once a month, we had been waiting to process checks until we had the Finance and Planning Committee meeting, and then with the council, and some bills were just getting paid late. So we've, those bills that will be late, we're paying online now and getting that streamlined, so we shouldn't be having any more late fees. Enforcement has been busy, we've really stepped up enforcement efforts in relation to our business license program, and we're getting, we're capturing more of those business licenses. We've increased our enforcement of BLM land, as I mentioned before, we're seeing more problems out there, so we're sending more resources out to the BLM. Building Department, happy to report that our budget is finally under control there. As you may recall, we redid our contract with Inarwest a couple of months back, and we are now bringing in just about the same amount of revenue that we're spending in the Building Department, which is how it's supposed to be, we're supposed to be capturing our actual cost of providing the service. So we were bleeding for a few months there to the tune of about $15,000 a month, and we've eliminated, we've eliminated that. We had a little bit of a rough transition to iWork in the Building Department, some issues there, but Gina Dixon actually did a great job of stepping in and helping them get that all spread away with. So my understanding now is that everything is running smoothly, and iWork is doing what we needed to do. We had some reliability issues in the Building Department in relation to our new wireless phones, our cloud-based phones, our computers not working properly. To solve that problem, we just had the Building Department hardwired. Up to now, we couldn't get lines over there, so they were working entirely off of Wi-Fi, which we think is the problem. So they're hardwired, and Mike, would you say that that's solved the problem so far?
Done.
Ah, fantastic, fantastic. All right. I don't know if you've noticed an issue that Councilman Bonner brought to staff over at Memorial Park, a lot of the names there have become hard to read. So we looked at it and decided that maybe all it needed was a good power wash. So we had PV maintenance go out and do a power wash, and it really made a big difference. Those bricks look really good now. So I think we're going to bring forward in future budgets, just an annual budget amount to do that on a regular basis to keep it looking nice. Staff recently worked with POA staff as well as EVMW staff to update our stormwater SSO protocol. It's been fully updated, all parties are much happier now, part of our ongoing efforts to be good neighbors, and we're both POA. We have begun the process of inventorying all city assets. That had been done some time back, but it had been quite a while, and it's never really fully been complete. So it's one of the projects our TBRRC fellow is working on diligently now, as we've established kind of the template, and now we're going through systematically, and we'll be assigning numbers and descriptions and tags to everything the city owns. On the police contract front, we are still waiting for the results of a review that the Sheriff's Department is performing. We've met with two captains that have been assigned by the sheriff to review the county's contracting practices of all the cities, and to look at what other counties are doing and kind of determine what best practices are. Those results are expected in October, I think they're going to share them with us late October or early November, and we'll see where it ends up. I think we have a sheriff who genuinely wants to reduce costs for cities, but I think we also have a county executive office who has an entirely opposite approach. They have a complete cost recovery approach, and so we may see, we may see, that may come to a head at some point. But we're hopeful that the Sheriff's Department will put something together that'll be more tailored for Canyon Lake, and will reduce our costs there. As far as our fire protection services, we had a staffing change to what's called traditional or non-municipal staffing. That staffing change was complete July 15th, which was significantly ahead of schedule. We really, we were initially told that that couldn't, that change couldn't happen until September, but we completed it early, which will be significant savings to the city that should save us an additional $82,000 for our fire budget this year, bringing the estimated total savings for switching staffing models to about $177,000 for the fiscal year. Still working on determining next steps as far as our fire contract, and we'll have more on that in the near future. We're still going to put some time into working on implementing the Fire Code Enforcement Program. We have adopted, the council adopted the fees, and we need to work on establishing procedures and forms and get that kicked off. We've recently been working with the POA and AMR, working to facilitate an agreement there to keep AMR in Canyon Lake. Currently, they have an office location here in town center, they're unhappy with the lease, they're looking to leave. And so the concern is, where is there for them to go other than outside of Canyon Lake? As I'm sure you know, AMR has a contract with the county to provide those services. It just so happens that they're located in Canyon Lake. We like them here because it shortens our response times. And so Councilman Smith actually had the idea, well, wait, if they need to move, perhaps we can find a place just inside the gates for them that would keep them here. And so that's being looked into. We had a good meeting with POA President Neil Welty and their general manager, Eric Hazepoff, and those negotiations are ongoing, but it's looking pretty promising, I'd say. Lastly, we have a tentative date for the next joint city council, POA board meeting. We're looking at Monday, September the 23rd. So if you could let me know, or let Anna know, the next day or two, if Monday, September 23rd works for you, that would be good. We can get you back to the POA on that.
Monday, the 23rd.
Yeah.
You can't do.
Well, if you wouldn't mind setting availability to Diana, then we'll coordinate with the POA. And that's all I have this evening.
Right. Councilmember Chris.
Thank you. Ledge One was dark last month. We do have a meeting this month, as well as a team deal task force meeting. The budget was recently approved, and I believe that funds were allocated. I did see those in the Finance Committee meeting notes and invoices, so I think we're on track with that. As I mentioned, I believe, the last meeting, I am available to assist with the Veterans Day Committee, so I guess Jordan, if you need help with that, please let me know. And that's all I have to report.
Okay. And I did jump over Councilman Bonner, he is not here, wishing the best in his recovery. Councilmember Aaron Crowns.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Crowns.
Councilmembers, okay, thank you. I did have several meetings. I'm not going to go chronologically with them like I usually do. I'm going to try and condense them between SCAG, W R C O G, Rector, those types of meetings. I'm just going to highlight some of the things that we've talked about at the meetings and sometimes, some were dark. But a couple of the fun things I was able to do was to, on the 18th of June, get a little meet and greet with the city manager at the couple of, and it was, well, it turned and everybody was quite impressed and I'm certainly happy that I was there and you didn't reach out as you always do in your presentation. The other highlight I would say would be the W R C O G General Assembly that was at Pachanga. And I think everybody enjoyed that and I know that I certainly did. My responsibility was to spend the night and show up the next morning for a short meeting, so I got to spend a little more time at Pachanga perhaps than I was entitled to. But enough of that, W R C O G, I think you switch a little bit to SCAG and, you know, California requires that every city and county adequately plan to meet current and projected housing needs. And through our H N A, it determines what that, what that need is every eight years. Later this month is expected to announce the latest need assessment for six county regions, at which point S C A is required to develop a proposed plan to how to facilitate and allocate those local numbers, those numbers to local jurisdiction. SCAG is going to conduct a four public hearings and attempt written comments over the next several weeks, residents, businesses and stakeholders to weigh in on these options for determining, excuse me, local housing needs as part of the regional housing needs assessment. Just how much this is going to affect a small little Canyon Lake, I don't know, but we do have to comply in some manner to. Sitting on the Energy and Environment Committee, there was a little, little concern about movement of senior citizens, movements, excuse me, how they get around into this country. They need to have a little more, more mobility, that they can carry on planes and buses and what have you. There's some type of accommodation to be made, perhaps in the future, for their electric scooters or whatever they're called, so that they can take them with them. Otherwise, a lot of them pretty well landlocked as to what they can do. I also suggest that at night, of course, which is, certainly makes good sense, but when walking, always wear lights. When you're, when you're biking, don't text or wear earbuds. I'm not sure whether this is for the senior citizens, but these were just some comments that they were, people brought up as to what needed to be done for protection. And I think I'll jump over to W R C O G. Just recently, the executive committee approved a Tump exemption for specialty built homes that serves as transitional housing for homeless and individual families, which is a pretty big break for contractors and for recipients of those houses. So that, that was something that, that was quite new, a little controversial, but I think that's going to pass. The executive committee approved reimbursement agreement with the city of Moreno Valley for the Nathan Street S R O, S R sixty energy project and Moreno Beach S R sixty energy project. Executive committee also approved reimbursement agreement with the city of Tameka, the Diaz Road, that's the western bypass widening project. This might interest Dorsey or maybe she already knows this, but as of July exam 2019, the state is out of long-term drought conditions due to the past rainy season.
Not the regulatory drought though.
Pardon me?
Not the regulatory drought, but the melting.
Well, this is, this is the Diamond Valley reservoir, which predominantly serves out of California area, is at ninety-four percent capacity. That's pretty good news. There's a streetlight program that W R C O G is sponsoring where they're encouraging cities to change all their streetlights to L E D lights. And streetlight retrofits, retrofits have begun in a number of participating jurisdictions, including the cities of East Mill, Reno Valley, Marietta and Wildabar. Am I timed up yet?
We have both.
I've got a whole bunch of stuff. It's been a couple of months, you know, since I got to say anything.
Hold it then. I gotta wake him up.
He should, well, okay.
He's nerd, aren't you?
I heard him. We have new, new officers on, on our executive committee for this year for, for W R C O G. Our chair is Marty Wright, who's the mayor of the city of Emmett. Our vice chair is Kevin Bash, council member of the city of Norville. And the second chair is Kelly Zarardo, mayor of Marietta. And I'm going to go to you know where. It's time for Vector.
We were waiting.
Well, I was keeping it for that, but actually, it's, it's quite short. There's a new virus infecting people in China and ticks may be the culprit. This is the Tygoteck, which was found to harbor newly discovered viruses in China. Newly discovered virus has been found infecting people in China. It may be transmitted by ticks according to a new report. I'm going to skip to, well, or. The rest of it is technical. The funny stuff I'm going to say for next one because the audience is not large enough right now. But Vector does have a new splash drone. It's a, it's the first waterproof quadro-pedic helicopter drone. It has four cameras and can land in the water to take pictures and boom, come right back out. To also recommend people to, this is mosquito season, which is probably always mosquito season, but some of the places that mosquitoes breed, which are obvious, but they're just one of the reminders of the, that your beach chairs with your cup holders might have just a little bit of water, mosquitoes like those places to, to breed. Flower pots are the basis that the bottom of that little dish of water, that's another favorite place for mosquitoes. An unusual place which is in your automobile and your windshield, where the windshield wipers are, you know, down below the glass or wherever, the water gets in there and mosquitoes get in there and that's been quite a popular place. So anywhere that there's a swamp puddle that you can accumulate, it suggests that you try to keep them empty all the time, even if it's just a little spot inside. Mosquitoes are very good at that. And I know that everybody's looking at you to shut up, so at this point, I'm going to add my report. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Very good report. Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Mayor Proten, you've done it again. We get three minutes to speak. You've taken two of mine, so now I gotta wrap everything up in one minute.
Well, that way you would.
So. Got a few things to report. You know, we were dark as a, as a council last month of July, but we were obviously on our regional boards. I, I get the opportunity to sit on R T A Riverside Transportation Agency and ridership was up in June, down in July. They have a summer program for kids that allows them the opportunity to ride the bus to get all the way to the beach for fifty cents, which is pretty incredible. And they've been pushing really hard on that and some of the advertising that they're doing for our college kids is pretty impressive. So it's been fun to see that work. I also had the opportunity last month to sit on behalf of Randy at R C T C. As you know, our biggest issue is that ninety-one fifteen freeway and it continues to be a struggle. It's been, it's been an issue. R C T C is working diligently as best as they can with the resources allotted to fix, you know, the congestion that they're having. It's just a continual problem that we have. I have a lot to report, but Jordan took my time. So I'm going to make a quick, you know, shout out to our sheriff's department. I mean, Fourth of July was incredible. You guys did a great job. I think the P O A reported between twenty-three and twenty-five thousand people were in our community and we had one incident. I think there was a fight that was recorded, maybe an intoxication of a young gal. But it was pretty well received and I think we had really good coverage and I know the P O A did a phenomenal job too. You guys worked well with them. So I want to say a special thank you. And lastly, you know, I don't know if, if those out there listening or in the audience can, can see how diligently our staff has been working on some of the bigger issues that we have. And, you know, it's pretty impressive to see them come up with a list and tackle nearly half of it, six months into our new city manager and some of the things that we're doing. So it's very impressive in the direction that we're going. I think we're taking things extremely seriously and you guys are doing a phenomenal job. So I just want to say thank you for all your continued work. We're very happy with our new city attorney. I think we've done a home run with that. I know Councilwoman Castillo worked really hard at, you know, working at those details. So I just want to say a big, you know, thank you to everyone, all the hard work that's been done. And on a last note, a personal note, we just had a baby last week and little baby Reagan and I'm so excited to be a dad again. So that's, that's it. I'm done.
That's a good report, a good report. Well, it's been an interesting few months for me, but this month is that we're back on track. I've got the R C A executive meeting coming up. We're having a mayor's breakfast on this Friday, which get really good attendance from the surrounding western Riverside mayors. And usually we use, we have a, a assembly person coming to talk about some of the bills that are pending. Also, we talk about common issues and, and it's common thread and sometimes solutions that they may find that others can take home with them or, or seek. So it's a, it's a good platform. I'm also on the, the league's executive committee for Riverside County. We're meeting on Monday night to set the tempo for where we're going for this upcoming year as it represents Riverside County. So most of the, the committees that I've been on or that I'm on and represent the city were, was dark during July, but everybody's getting back in gear and getting ready to hit the, the street running when we start moving. So that's pretty much it for my report. I want to thank all of the folks out there who have sent all their thoughts and wishes to myself and my family, my wife, and I can't thank you enough. With that, I would like to say we're going to, the announcement is that we have Wednesday, September 4th, two thousand nineteen, for the next council meeting. There'll be a closed session starting at five thirty with the open session starting at six thirty. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at twenty thirty-seven.